Back to you.
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
Thank you, Marshall. All right, so our first item of business is just adding an executive session. So if I could make a motion, vote to add an executive session under exemption two on Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022, following the working session to discuss the renewal of the town administrator's contract.
So moved.
Second, thank you, Cam. We'll move to roll call, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Hook.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Cant.
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez's aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on then, we have an update from our new digital communications coordinator. So Kevin, I'll hand it over to you.
A quick question, please, Madam Chair, if I may. That executive session will be next week?
Yes, after the working session of the 23rd, so we don't have an exact start time. It'll just follow it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board. It's a great pleasure. I get to start the meeting today introducing Stephanie Bellotti, who is our new communications, digital communications coordinator. Stephanie started about a month ago, a little short in the role. She's part-time, she's working four to six hours a week, helping us right now build our platform. We're very fortunate. I had the pleasure of working in a prior municipal life and fortunately, the work that I did with Stephanie and I saw her do is exactly what we're trying to do here in Topsfield. So we have somebody very experienced to help us create and navigate the process that we've undertaken. I'm super excited for this opportunity to be able to move this forward as well because communications is so critical. It's really what is transparency in government's all about. And as it's been said before, meeting the people where they are, we have a really great opportunity to share with our community and beyond, a lot of really great things that we, as a team, the board and our team here at Town Hall have been able to do recently and continue to work on. So Stephanie's great and she's going to say hello. And then she's got a very brief presentation that she's actually going to share with you folks to give everyone an understanding of what direction we're heading and sort of the next steps associated with it. So without further ado, Stephanie.
Hey, everybody. As Kevin said, I'm Stephanie Bellotti. He and I worked together in Beverly. And we, a lot of the things that Topsfield is looking to do from a social media and outreach perspective, we went through in Beverly in the last two years as well. So I do have a little bit of experience putting these things in place and also learning from some of the mistakes that we made in Beverly that I'm hoping to, you know, correct as we move forward in Topsfield. So I know you guys are trying to get through a few things. I don't want to take too much of your time. The presentation itself might generate some questions. If you could just hold them to the end. It's just five slides. It's just that if we ask questions during it, it might just prolong the time that I have and I don't want to infringe on your time. So I'm going to share my screen now and then put my presentation into presentation mode. So hopefully that's big enough for you to see, but I'm just going to jump right into it. All right, great. Thanks, Boyd. All right. So some social media goals. And actually, just before I start, I went over this with Kevin pretty much three hours ago. So some of these goals, we can certainly add more, we can take some away, but I threw together a few goals that I thought might be what we're trying to do as a town. So I have sort of hard goals and soft goals, with the hard goals being promoting all the good work that you all are doing, so our town successes, improving interest and participation in local government. So, you know, maybe we're interested in getting some more people attending the town meetings. Maybe that's a goal that we have. And if it is, maybe that's something we can do through social media. Increasing participation at town-sponsored activities and events. I mean, the skating rink was a great success. If we'd had social media in place, maybe more people would have come out, you know, that type of thing. And I know you're, we're trying to get some recreational programming in place as well. So same type of thing. How can we, you know, use social media to, just to spread the word even more? And then just in general, educating residents and public about how local government works. I know there were different things when, when you become a homeowner and you move to a town, you don't always know how things, how things work. And, and this could be a really good opportunity, even like simple things like, how do I request my birth certificate? Or, you know, where can I go to pay my bills? Things like that. We can do really fun things in social media with videos and, and how-to explanations that could be fun and just, again, using what we have. Some soft goals, and these more apply to what social media can do. So we, we want to spread the word about our town and what we're doing. It's called electronic word of mouth, EOM. It's one of the things we'd like to achieve. Reputation management. My understanding is that there are some existing platforms out there that are, you know, the unofficial town platforms. Obviously, we want what we have to be the place to go to get your, your data, your content and what's, what's accurate as opposed to what people think is going on. So the idea of, you know, having social media to build our reputation of trust and then further the trust indicators. Just having a social media presence shows that we take this, we take communication seriously. Topsfield wants to move into this, this decade and have, have these platforms out there for people to use because that's what people are on, you know? And then just in general, encouraging promotion. We want people to interact with our pages and our posts. We want them to like them and share them and, and put them on their own pages so that the word just spreads even more. Okay, so this, I know some of you are very versed in social media platforms, but I don't know if everybody on this call is. So I kind of wanted to go through just some general information about the, the top three that I think we're going to focus on at the start. So Facebook, biggest, you know, most popular social media platform right now. But at its, at its core, it's about fun. It's about connecting friends and family and showing photos of happenings that are, are fun and happy and, and that type of thing. It has both a, you can go on your computer and look at Facebook and you can also go on your, on your phone, so it has that mobile platform. Instagram is more of a photo video sharing app. And Facebook actually purchased Instagram. So I think what started to happen was Instagram started to get a bigger following than Facebook or started to kind of creep up on it. And so Facebook just bought them. But when you post on Instagram, it is an image or a video. It, you really don't have a lot of text in there. So what you end up doing is you post pictures with text in the picture. So it's a little bit different. People are scrolling through it, they're liking it. Additionally, whereas in Facebook, you have friends and it's mostly the people that you know or the people you interact with. Instagram, you're just, you're following topics of interest. You're following, if you like cycling, you, you start to follow cycling accounts. If you like exercise or being outdoors, you follow those types of accounts. So it's a little bit of a different model. And then Twitter started off more being sort of a micro blog of sharing sort of opinions or ideas or thoughts on, on news. And, you know, originally it had a 140 character limit. Now it's up to 280, but it's really about quick opinions, thoughts, ideas, or originally it was. Nowadays, pretty much you can do what you can do on Facebook, you can do on Twitter. So they, they really do, they've updated or upgraded themselves to all of them allow, you know, photos and videos and that type of thing. So, you know, as of right now, they're, they're sort of similar, but, but at their core, they just had different models. So I just say that out loud so you all are on the same footing. Additionally, there are different demographics of, of who uses what. So if you want to make sure that you hit, hit them all, it's probably a good idea to not just do Facebook or not just do Instagram or not just do Twitter. But hey, let's just do all three and then we cover all our bases at the start. Okay, so what do we want for Topsfield? You know, I did an inventory of all the other towns on the North Shore, pretty much, and said, you know, what do they have and what have they named their pages? And Kevin and I pretty much decided, you know, Town of Topsfield is pretty much in line with what all the other towns have done. Some other, some other municipalities have done just the name of the town and then, you know, MA. Honestly, this is what we chose. We thought it seemed to be the most straightforward, but it's still up to, you can change, we can still change it, but really just keeping it simple. When you, when you pick a name, it becomes your at symbol and it becomes your URL. So for Facebook, it would be facebook.com/townoftopsfield, instagram.com/townoftopsfield, twitter.com/townoftopsfield. So the idea was that across the board, if you went into any one of these platforms, you could find the same name and it would be the official town page. A side note to hear, to this would be email distribution. So that's not something that maybe you guys associate with social media, but really, I feel like we can't have these without having some sort of ability to allow people to subscribe to something and push out information. So I, I talked to Council on Aging, Library and Recreation, and they all have different ways of managing their list. So Library uses MailChimp, which is a version, an email distribution program, very similar to Constant Contact. The Council on Aging, they just have an Excel spreadsheet where they keep all of their emails. And then Recreation is building their list. Also, I believe in, in Excel, Stephanie sent out a survey and in the survey, she asked, if you want to, if you want to hear about recreation program in the future, please, you know, include your email. So she's in the process of collecting emails. So I, I was talking to Kevin about if as a town, we also decided to go with an actual program like Constant Contact, I think it would be very valuable. Okay, so looking at sort of the digital media framework that I see, so in the center, you have a website, which we, we are currently upgrading the homepage and making it look a little more visually pleasing. The idea is that that would be where we could, if we don't want to go into all the detail in social media, we could direct people to the website. And that just seems to be what most people do. If we, if we want to highlight a grant that we won or something, a win of another sort, but we don't want to go into all the details there, we would put it on the website, put it, you know, create a page for grants and then promote it. And then if people want to hear more, they can go to the website. So in a way, we'll, we'll be driving traffic to the website through our social media, which is also, you know, always a good thing. So for Facebook, the, the items I have asterisks are, are the ones that would be new. So we already have a police Facebook page, a fire, Public Works. Library actually has two. They have one general and one for teen and children. And then the Council on Aging is in the process of building their Facebook page as well. So, you know, we have a pretty good presence in the Facebook front. Instagram, sorry, my, the, the Zoom images are blocking what's there. But, you know, again, we would create a Town of Topsfield Instagram account and then the library also has, currently has an Instagram account. And then over on the Twitter side, again, creating a Town of Topsfield Twitter account. And then I also talked to Kevin about having him create his own Twitter account. And the idea behind that is just, again, the, the model of Twitter is to kind of provide your insights and your thoughts in a, in a brief amount of text. And it's great to have a town site, but I think it would also be great for Kevin to be saying his thoughts as a, as an individual and leader in this, in the town. And if he did that, then we would share his, his postings to our account. So we wouldn't be one or the other. We'd, we'd always be working together and I would, I would work with Kevin on, on that type of thing. And then just showing what we already have in place, police, fire, water, library already have Twitter accounts for Topsfield. So email distribution, I kind of already covered that a little bit. And then, you know, future platforms, once we sort of get this up and running and feel confident and, and, you know, we're on top of content and that type of thing, the idea, you know, maybe we could look into some others. That's, you know, up for debate. Okay, so I wanted to talk about content real quick because I actually, as I was looking into it, I was, I, I was kind of surprised about what I discovered. But anyway, the important thing about content is engagement. You need to have people engaging with your content. And what I mean by that is liking it, commenting on it and sharing it to their own page or account. The reason why you need engagement is because all these social media platforms have algorithms in which they put things in your feed. So you come in, you create your profile, you start to like pages and like things and like communities and, and follow those communities. But it doesn't necessarily mean that everything those, those pages or communities put out there will automatically come into your feed. The way you get things to come into people's feeds is by having a high sort of engagement score, algorithm score. So in order to get a high score, you also want to include some fun stuff. And I call it fun. There's fun and there's business. So, you know, I kind of wrote down here, posts that are engaging or fun, they, you know, sentimental, something that generates an emotion, utility, explaining how to accomplish something or how to do something. People, people love to watch videos of, of people going step by step. This is how you, you should do it or you, you know, you could do it. Counterintuitive posts, something you think you knew and then proves, proves to be the opposite. Funny, making people laugh is always going to engage folks, get, get a like or a share. Surveys, polls, contests. If you require an answer to something, you know, like respond by, by commenting, I mean, right there you get engagement. And then quotes, things, inspirational quotes or things that make you think, those also tend to get a lot of engagement. So I'll just say it again, you know, in order to achieve visibility in someone's feed, you really want to encourage engagement with that content. So I, I kind of, I had talked with Kevin about some ideas for some fun stuff and I just sort of put them here. Hopefully, again, you can, you can see that the text isn't too small. So let me just first go to the business side. You know, meetings, events, programming, public safety announcements, you know, information about your taxes or what's due this month or this quarter, grant wins and funding we may have gotten, frequently asked questions, hours of operation, contact information. All that stuff is important to, to us because that's what, that's what we do as city employees or, sorry, town, town employees, right? But it's not that, not always that interesting to people who are kind of scrolling through their feed and trying to get, you know, you want them to stop and look at something. So you have to kind of intersperse that with fun stuff. So obviously, whenever we have a town activity or event, we want to take lots of photos and show people having a great time. I mean, that, that always gets likes and, and, you know, comments. An idea I was talking to Kevin about was showing, you know, maybe a historical photo of Topsfield and then sort of show, show what it looks like today, you know, like then and now type photos. I'd love to do a video series on just basic things on, you know, how, how to, how to get your birth certificate, how to join the Council on Aging, how to sign up for a recreation activity, you know, to go to each department and say, you know, what are your how-tos? And just build a video on it. Meet your town staff, your select board, your committee and commission folks. Again, it'd be great to kind of understand who these people are, why, why they decided to do this and what they love about their job or whatever. I think people are interested in that. And then even taking it to the businesses, maybe meet some Topsfield business owners. I know they would appreciate that, but so on and so forth. I don't have to go into all of them, but you can kind of get the idea. If we create that content and then we do like three or four fun posts and then we talk about, hey, there's a meeting tonight. And then we do three or more fun posts and then, oh, you know, this road is closed for, for paving, you know, that type of thing. I think that's a good formula for making sure we get engagement, we get people to follow our page and then it keeps that stuff in their feed as you go along. So I think that's all I really had. So I will stop there and say that I have a lot of work ahead of me because building content is, is going to take some time, but I'm very excited to get started and I think this is going to be fun and hopefully, hopefully this is what you guys are looking for.
Thank you, Stephanie. This sounds great. Could you unshare the screen just so we all come back on? That'd be great. This is very exciting. Speaking of timing that way, I know that Kevin was trying to sync up the launch of the new media sites with the website. So do we have kind of a projected time when this will come live?
I'll answer that. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a great question. It was one of my notes, things I want to make sure I covered too. So right now, we've greenlit with Civic Plus, the, the mock-up, which, on the revision of the website design. And we've given them some reorganizing of some of the dropdowns. We're anticipating that they're, they're working on it right now and that we should have that back hopefully for final sign-off in the next week or so. That's my estimate at this point. It, that said, it's taken a little bit longer throughout the process than I anticipated. So please don't hold me to that, but that's the goal. End of the month, I've talked with Sue about having Stephanie transition over to the website and she's very excited to relinquish those duties. She's done a fantastic job with it and we're going to miss her, but, you know, it, it's a lot, especially with all the things that we have going on. So the idea is that we, we're building the platforms. We talked about, we have the namesake, we've got the, everything consistent, which is really important. We did, we've seen towns and cities which have had different names, at signs for different platforms and that becomes very confusing. We've been able to lock in on the three that are consistent for the town purposes. And as Stephanie said, it's very important that it's something people would recognize as a town media platform and it's consistent with others. If the website's not completed by the end of this month, we're probably going to be looking to probably launch the social media platform, Facebook, probably followed by Twitter shortly thereafter and Instagram. We're sort of still tiring out if we want to launch those at the same time or if we want to do it separately, but we're weeks away, I'd say, from starting to launch the different platforms out into the public.
Okay, great. And then how do we get word out that these things have launched? Is there any kind of a grand introduction or will people just kind of stumble across it if they're Twitter people or if they're Instagram people?
So we, I have some ideas. I haven't, I didn't include that in my presentation. It's in the appendix. But yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we can certainly put it on our website, but that's not something that folks really, you know, go to on a daily basis, right? So my thought was more, sorry. We could honestly have Kevin put out a robocall and just kind of announce it. We have the website. We already have some of those existing social media platforms like I talked about before. We could ask them to sort of, you know, tell everyone, hey, please, please go to this page and, and like it and follow it, et cetera. If we get that email distribution list up and running or program up and running, my thought is maybe we could leverage the library, Council on Aging and Recreation list just to have them send something out and say, the town has launched these new media platforms, you know, please go on and, and, and follow. I know you have a little.
Press release of any kind to the papers?
Yeah, so I'd contact Neil, I'd call over at the, the virtual Chronicle now and hopefully they could use an announcement. And we'd also, I'd probably reach out to Paul Lane or at Sale News and just let them know and they might put a little very quick blurb that we're launching a new website and social media. It'll probably be on page eight or, but it would certainly be something that we could put out there in hard print as well. I would just emphasize what Stephanie said about leveraging our existing platforms and where people are. The town's put social media, those people are engaged on social media and having that pushed out there is going to be a really good starting spot. And then we have people who are, we have the fire, we have the police, we have the COA, we have the library, DPW, which we'll push out to those people who are following or in those groups to let them know that we have this page. And then ultimately, it's up to us to make it interesting, like Stephanie said, and engage people and have them want to come back for more content, more information. And the content building's been going on for the last few weeks and it continues. And Stephanie Ruffin, she's reached out to a number of department heads and staff, getting the whole world of what we do and trying to piece together some really great content. So we're set up not just day one, but day two, day three, week two, week three, week five, right off the gate. So we, we can keep it interesting.
One thought that I would add, and Stephanie, this all looks great. It's very exciting. I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing what you come up with. On the, the hard goals, I had written down here about promoting what Topsfield has to offer as a town. So whether it be our businesses or the historic component or all the different things you can do recreation-wise with the hiking and kayaking and cross-country skiing and our agriculture, there's so much that the town has to offer that I think a lot of people don't really know who Topsfield is and, and all that we have going on here. So that might be another goal. Great. Oh, and just to add, TCP, I'm not sure, Kevin, have you shared with Stephanie about TCP?
I'm not sure if I have, but if I haven't, we certainly, I will touch base with some of the nonprofits.
Okay.
Great list I gave for the other Stephanie, Stephanie Sweeney, that I'll, I'll certainly share.
Okay, because they have, Stephanie, a, a great website that they put together that has so much of that information about what the town has to offer. And they linked into the garden club, which has a myriad of information. And so a lot of it is already there. It's just a matter of tying in or linking with it. And then one question for you. What is the top 10?
So I was, I think it would be really valuable to be able to send a maybe monthly newsletter out, but the idea is just pick the top 10 things that people need to know or top five. If we don't have 10, top five. But the idea is like, you know, people don't have time to, to always find out what's going on. And this way, we either, you know, put it in a newsletter, send it out, or even just kind of have a list on our social media that, you know, I would work with Kevin to kind of determine what are the top five things this month that we want to focus on or that Topsfield residents should focus on knowing. And it's an easy way to get some quick hits. If they want to learn more, they click on it, they'd go to the website and learn more. If, if they read it and they're like, hey, I know about all those things, you know, it's, it's just a way to get the information out there quick and easy and make it simple for folks to kind of get the knowledge they, they need quickly.
Okay, great. And last thing, and then I'll stop talking. This might be an opportunity too, to help us kind of brand. We were talking about the, the naming before. We have a DPW and then there's a separate water Facebook. So to let people know the water is part of the DPW, so they see Public Works, they know water is part of that. And maybe there's some tweaking over on the water's website so that they know they're in the same department. So people get used to the new reorganization and how things are structured.
Yep. And there's also a couple of things I, I saw on some of the Facebook pages. You know, Facebook has had updates, a lot of updates over the years and I don't think the police have leveraged having the, the simplified name. So, you know, it should be facebook.com/topsfieldpolice and they still have, they still have like a number, like a really long number as their, you know, so things like that that I'm noticing as I'm doing the research that I can certainly, you know, make some suggestions for improvements.
That's great.
And Stephanie, you might also look out and Proctor, Stewart, Masco, they may have something where we can send, you know, on their email list, we may be able to send notifications to parents about this new, you know, these new social channels. And the parents are going to be the most inclined people to follow them anyway, I would think. I think you get some critical mass there.
That's a good point. Good point. Any other questions or comments for Stephanie?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. Stephanie, nice job.
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. Stephanie, nice job. Appreciate it. And it sounds to me like it's going to be exciting to have you around here. However, I got to tell you folks, 20 years ago when I became a selectman, it it's 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 remarkable for me to sit here and think about how much we've changed in 20 years.
Did you still have your, uh, your feathered pen with the ink?
We used to talk about how to communicate with the the townspeople, how to how to keep them informed. And, uh, it was always difficult. And this is truly an exciting way to try to do that. And, um, I I can't be involved because I don't know what you guys are talking about.
We're going to teach you, Boyd.
But I'm, oh, yeah, you can drop. I hope you hope you succeed. But you guys are going to be the ones that carry the ball and I'm excited about it. Thank you all.
Yeah, I know we have other things, uh, to move on to, so I won't go on too long, other than to say this is fantastic. Uh, and I know that when Cam and I talked about this, whatever, six, seven months ago, we were impatient to get going. Uh, and, uh, it's clear that it was better that we waited because this is so much better than what we could have done uh, before Stephanie was here, that, um, this, this, uh, this is why we waited. This when we're finally ready to get it going, I think is terrific. And by the way, Town of Topsfield is spot on. That's great. And I assume we've already locked that down, as you said, so we already own those and so they're not going anywhere. That that to me is perfect.
Yeah, and, um, kudos to Kevin on on snagging you, Stephanie. He always brings in the best.
Stephanie, especially your experience and the lessons learned that you've been through. We appreciate starting out with those things. Thank you. Good having you.
Thank you, everybody.
It's it's going to be really exciting to watch it develop.
So, um, with that, um, we will move on. Thank you for coming tonight, Stephanie. Um, Cam has shared that he has a hard stop personally at 6:30. So we'll just move right over uh, at six or six?
No, I said, thanks. Thanks. 6:30. Yep.
So we'll move over to the town warrant. And if I could propose that we start at Article 27, which is, um, where the new content really begins. The new words have been added and we hadn't really discussed these. We can go back after we finish 27 through 40 and we can talk about the edits that were incorporated based upon our last meeting. And that way, Cam, if we run over past 6:30, you can certainly pass over any comments or call Kevin and share with him how you felt about the the edits.
Thank you. Got it.
If that sounds okay with everybody.
Cam, what's your cutoff?
6:30, one hour from now, 6:30. Yep.
Okay, so, um, starting with Article 27, which is the landfill repairs. Um, Kevin, if I can turn it over to you?
Um, and I just want to say, Stephanie's on this call. Thank you for the support on the digital communication coordinator. I know it was a team effort to kind of get to where we are. Um, I I'm very excited for this. I was a little skeptical at the beginning, but I am all in and I think it's going to be a really great tool for us going forward. It it's going to set us apart. Um, so on the articles, Article 26, um, that was eliminated. That's the economic development. That was the downtown revitalization. Um, monies that we I had put in there for discussion purposes. Um, and we took that out based on the last meeting. The Article 27 is the landfill repairs. That's, uh, initially in the last version was improvements. Repairs are more adequate and and precise in what we're doing. Um, there's one significant piece that we need to do that's in the, uh, description as you've read. Um, and then there's some general maintenance that the 35,000 would cover. That number came from our consultant, um, Weston and Sampson is you were our prior consultants at the landfill. Mike is our new consultant and he did a pretty good assessment on what the needs were to get our landfill up to up to par, um, with in the condition.
So Kevin, last last time, I'm sorry, good.
Go ahead, Cam.
I was going to say, last time we were together, there was a placeholder of 10K and you thought it'd be more like 15 to 20. So the consultant in pretty fast time said, we're going to need significantly more. Did I get that right?
So in the budget, we had an over ask of $10,000 to, um, for maintenance at the landfill, the operating budget. We can do the work for the one time, but that's going to increase the cost of 35. So the plan within the operating budget initially was to sort of do some of this work over time, uh, multiple years. This will allow us to get caught up one time. Um, and the monies in the budget that we'd asked for for the 10 with this article no longer needs to be an ask within the budget. So we're reducing the operating budget by 10,000 and asking for a free cash allocation of the 35.
Uh, very clear. Thank you. Got it.
Um, Kevin, I I noticed it in this one, but it's mentioned in other, um, articles as well. It's just verbiage, but the words or its equivalent. And lots of times I don't think that pertains and makes sense. I know it's kind of standard language and in some articles it does make sense, but like in the case here of the landfill, uh, we're going to repair equipment or its equivalent. I don't really think it's at that point. So I would suggest that we be a little more specific about repairing the equipment to say, um, repair environmental control and monitoring equipment at the landfill. So people don't think it's sports equipment or just be confused.
And that's the first and second paragraphs you're referring to in the title or or the the language there, the motion.
The first paragraph where it says, yes, to see if the town will vote. So, um, the or its equivalent, I pulled out of a couple others as well because I don't think there's an equivalent. There's it's very specific equipment that we're looking to repair. And you can still be general enough in the description, but, um, I have a couple of other tweaks, but I I can just pass those over to you in the
Yeah.
the wording, but those are the big ones.
And so take out or its equivalent, and I'm sorry, take out repair and refer to it. What was the language?
I would keep repair in there, but I would say like repair environmental control and monitoring equipment. Right now it just says repair equipment at the landfill and it's pretty vague. You do go through, um, and describe it in the big paragraph. I just think it would be helpful if it were up in that first, um, and in the, um, recommendation itself, you know, in both of those.
Perfect.
So so since we're talking about that, and I I like your wording there, Lynn, uh, of the environmental control and monitoring systems because it's taken out of apparently the one thing that we're trying to follow in the C M R. I have a suggestion of an alternative one. I I had either what you put in there, so to speak, or based on what I tried to read here for the repair and or replacement of monitoring wells. Is it limited to wells? Because everything I kind of read below is about wells and it'd be very nice if we could clarify it just like that. And $35,000 seems like an incredibly high amount of money for that.
So the drilling of one of the wells, as I understand it, is it has to be re-drilled and that in and of itself, the drilling can be between 15 and $20,000. Um, so that's where the the lion's share of that cost comes from.
That's the 50 foot wall that's in there that you mentioned?
That's right. Um, that's the big expense, but the rest of it, um, there's a, it hasn't been much, um, funding put towards the upkeep. And so there's, there's, again, this is a number from the consultant that he felt was strong. When I talked internally with the team before we had this number, the number was actually a little bit higher of what they anticipated it to be, but the consultant said 35 is a good number. You don't need to ask for more than that.
Okay, so what about that as a as a wording after select board to say for repair and or replacement of monitoring wells? Because you're putting in a 50 foot wall, so that's, uh, that's the replacement. You talked about it being a replacement, I guess. At least one bedrock, yeah. So it doesn't cover everything. That
I would want to talk.
Go.
I'd want to talk to the team to confirm that that's not too limiting in the scope. Um, I I think that's the intent, but I would want to confirm that if that's the decision that the board wants to make with the name of namesake for the, um, motion and the, um, and the above.
So so I'm going to make a suggestion then that we go with that wording and then have as an alternative, if they say that's too restrictive, to go with what essentially Lynn said, which is for the repair and maintenance of environmental control and monitoring systems.
You could just come back and tell us, Kevin, which of those is more appropriate, but at least it's more descriptive.
Mr. Ginn, I don't want to misspeak the language. If you could just email me that namesake, I'll pass that along very specifically because I that that language is very specific and I want to make sure that it's it's not too restrictive. I don't want to misrepresent it to the team.
But but I think we all agree that we want to take out or its equivalent. It didn't make sense to me either.
Yep.
It it's too too wishy washy. Yeah.
And I know it's standard text. It's in a number of them and just in a couple of places it
It doesn't belong. Yeah, there are a couple of places where it doesn't.
Yeah. Okay, any other significant comments? Otherwise, editing tweaks we can send over to Kevin to be incorporated?
Yeah, I'll, I I have some markup on the whole doc. I'll I'll send that in.
Okay.
But just to mention though, uh, because it's, um, in more than one place. The name is Pie Brook Community Park. That was a big, uh, deal when that was done and words were parsed in there to get it right. So it's Pie Brook Community Park is what it is. And things like putting in the address in that for what we're doing, I don't think it's necessary. Commonwealth of Massachusetts can go out. This is not a legal document. But I also think that the, uh, the description is a little, it's it's good because there's a lot of detail, but I think it's a little much. Uh,
So yeah, just send over.
I I don't know.
Yeah, we'll just send over.
Down is the idea. And I I'll say one technical thing though about in the middle there, it talks about establishing monitoring points across the landfill surface. Um, that would be confusing, I think. Uh, monitoring points around the landfill site. I think that's what you're talking about. When you say on the landfill surface, it sounds like you're talking about the place where the fields are, but I'll I'll send you all of this.
Okay.
And and there's another one too. Okay. Oh, wait a minute. Uh.
If there are any particulars like that, you can send it and Kevin can check with his group to make sure the wording accurately reflects what they're doing.
This is worth thinking about, asking about though. The very last line there says long-term usability of the landfill monitoring network. I I think what you mean there is long-term functionality or functioning, excuse me, long-term functioning of the landfill monitoring network.
That's fine.
Now, I'm worried about
We do have a hard stop at 6:30, Dick, so.
Okay, I'm okay. Worried about that network though. Again, if there's any gas monitoring, which is not mentioned in there, that would make it all different from what we were just talking about. Okay. Next.
Okay, um, Article 28, the tree removal and plantings. Here is, um, another spot, Kevin, where I took out or its equivalent. Um, because we're taking the trees from the town right of ways. There is no equivalent. Um, and right of ways, I think that would be plural, right? If they're all as possessive in there.
Rights of way?
Either right, right of ways or rights of way. I don't know, but in no case would it be possessive. Right now it's way apostrophe S, so whichever that wording is, Marshall.
I'm not sure. I just wanted to sound fancy.
I think there's only essentially one kind of right. So I think it's right of ways. But more importantly, um, I I'm suggesting that we actually change that wording, um, oh, from from rights of ways to, uh, from town properties. Okay, then in the description, we can talk about the typically rights, uh, typically the fact that it's, um, uh, on rights of ways and things like that. But I think to keep us open so that we can, we can, uh, do things.
Our right of ways.
I was going to say a right of ways is not necessarily a property.
Yeah, that's someone else's property that we have a right to utilize, to cross over or to put something on. So I'm not sure the right of way in all cases are are property.
I think I think we do not want to to do those things on rights of way that we do not own. We should only be doing things on things that we own. The one that's a concern to me that we don't own is sections of the rail trail. We do own a little bit of the rail trail, but most sections we either have a lease on or a license on. But, um, I'm willing to give up the rail trail as any of these dollars.
But i- if if a tree, for instance, is say right on the curb, right next to the the road, that would be likely someone else's property, but certainly the town right of way that we're, isn't that precisely the kind of trees we're talking about? The ones right on roads and our lines, et cetera?
The the town has a right of way of a certain width, uh, which includes the pavement, but more than just the pavement typically, hopefully the pavement is not is is all on our right of way. But the edges, uh, of the pavement typically have town owned property. We do not want to be removing trees from other people's property. That's their responsibility.
Yeah, it's just for for operations perspective, but we've had a number of people reach out and we around trees that have not been on the town's property or right of ways. And as a result, we've not been able to remove any trees for the people who had requested such. Um, that's a zero sum in my book. We don't take anything. We don't touch private property. That's private property. So whatever the wording is where we want to land, the intent is not to do it on private property.
Okay, right. And and with that, I agree.
To clarify, the national grid, because there's discussion, national grid will go on private property and ask the owner in certain cases where they see a tree as a threatening, if they can take it down. So you always get permission from the but here we don't even want to suggest the taxpayer money will be used to help people take trees down on their property. It's on town property. I think that's the best.
Is that what we're talking about? It's just town property?
Yeah, whatever we have rights to.
And I didn't say owned. I said town properties. So that could perhaps open up something like a leased property, but I didn't, I didn't say that. I said town property. The intent is owned properties.
Okay, um, quick question.
Comment, comment if I may.
Sure.
Uh, we have taken trees down on rights of way in the past. We have taken trees down on private property in the past when it seemed to be appropriate. And we've done that right downtown Topsfield, uh, in the last two or three years. So I think it ought to be stated to be, uh, town rights of way or owned or town property.
So Boyd, so we still have money to do that, to do other things. This is for this particular warrant article to make it very clear what the people are voting for. And and I think it removes any, uh, confusion as to how how the taxpayer money will be used based on this warrant article. I ju- I think it's, okay, that's my thought.
Um, Kevin, you know, the work, all the work now that National Grid is doing, um, with the trees. Is that over and above? We still need this 50,000 even with all the work that they're doing?
So 50,000 is highlighted in yellow because it's still a number that's to be determined. I've asked, when I met with Dave Bond, uh, a week ago, we looked at the work you referenced with National Grid, Madam Chair. And during that conversation, we talked in more detail about this warrant article and I asked him to, he has, like I've mentioned before, he has this. I don't know if it's necessarily a written list, but he's got a list somewhere in his mind or someplace where of the trees that are concerning to him that have been in either brought up by a constituent or once he's recognized as being potentially problematic. When we were driving around, um, we were looking, the the work National Grid is doing is on the route of a 35 K V line, which is a pretty heavy duty line that goes through, um, Topsfield and to other communities. There are roads off of that that have power to it, but they're not, um, that level of a heavy duty electrical line. They're much smaller. But there are, when we were driving, we actually noticed there was a tree, um, between the two roads we're going to that was right up against a power line on one of those roads, um, which was clearly very dead. And National Grid does not look to clear on those roads. It's only clearing on the customer. Have hundreds of impacted customers, not ones or twos. So our hope would be if there is an issue, an identified tree that's a public hazard or safety issue, whether it's from an electrical standpoint or just that it's failing and could come down at any moment, we'll have a place where we can pull funds to address the issue.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one?
Uh, so I changed the wording, uh, in the explanation and it's suggested wording, but I think if I read it, it's a little bit, uh, shorter, but I think I read it. Okay. The town has an inventory of hazardous trees across the town properties. The art, this article would allow the town to address this backlog of hazardous trees which are typically dead or diseased along town, along the town's right of way. The town's budget includes funds for tree removal, but these funds are used primarily to remove trees which come down during storms. That's taking the wording that you have there and changing it around and shortening it up a little bit. But I'll send this to you and we can discuss it further the next time. But I'll send this to you and we can discuss it further the next time.
Great. Thank you. Um, Article twenty-nine, the park in ball fields. And um, two things quickly before you go into this, Kevin. Again, the or it's equivalent, I think, comes out because we're saying specifically where this work is being done. And so we don't have an equivalent. And then um, I think to Dick's point, the name of the Pie Brook, I actually put Pie Brook Park. I didn't know it was Pie Brook Community Park. That didn't stick in my head. But in the italic description, just to have it be the the Pie Brook Community Park name.
Which, by the way, if if that, and I have no reason to doubt you, Mr. Gant, but I just meanwhile checked our town website. Nowhere is that name reflected. So if that, in fact, is indeed the name, we'll want the new website to reflect that as well.
Yeah, because I think it's on the sign. I think the sign that went up there, it says that full name as I'm.
Again, I I don't doubt it. I just checked out our our official town website and it's just listed as Pie Brook Park there.
Yep.
We, can we please correct the website so we don't have to talk about it? I suspect it's in some minutes of some select board meeting when this thing was uh, moved out.
Listen, I I was the park and cemetery guy and I was happy correcting you uh, folks at every turn, so I'm all about getting the names correct.
Um, is there anything for this article, other than edits, that we can send to Kevin on our own that doesn't change the, you know, the the crux of the idea behind it? Is there anything that you disagree with with this article, the sum, or that we're doing it?
Well, I think it's worth it to uh, yeah, let's talk about the merits of this. Uh, it does talk uh, about leveling the fields and we have to understand that four of those fields are on top of the landfill. And the landfill does decay at certain various rates in various places, causing it to have undulations or depressions or whatever you want to call them. And so uh, we can spend money uh, forty-five thousand leveling them, especially with a laser, so it's real accurate. But um, I don't think that this is uh, an appropriate thing to be trying to do. I just talk.
Leveling the fields, Dick, just before you go on to it, you don't think leveling the fields is a good thing to do? Um, I think it sounds like there's a danger to the people actually playing on it because of the undulations. You you think we shouldn't be doing it?
Right, because you're just, you're going to be chasing your tail. Now, when they get to be a problem, you certainly fill in the things, but to spend a lot of money trying to level the fields and then three, six months later, they're undulated, why do we spend so much money making sure they were so level? The better thing might.
Kevin, could you speak to just that before? Okay, before Dick goes on to his other points, could you just speak to that one?
So two points following that. One, we're looking at increasing the fees and bringing in around eighteen thousand dollars uh, for field use fees. I've said to rec directorate, to the um, highway superintendent, that we're not raising the fees on the fields unless we deliver a better product. We've heard repeatedly last year uh, and into this year, the conditions of the fields. And that over the years, the issue that we're addressing, there is some settling in certain places, mostly in the outfield. Um, what happens over the years, we get a railroad tie type effect on the baselines and lips on the infields uh, that cause significant um, safety issues um, on the ball fields. The hope with this is part of a master plan around um, the the department. And getting our fields up to a starting point, where the condition of the fields are so poor that we spend a lot of times just trying to maintain a field that's not really in the condition that we would expect or the can, or the people who are using the fields expect. This would get us to a starting place where then we're just maintaining a field that's basically brought up to a safety level. Um, and I know I I it's, I believe in this for a number of reasons, but also as somebody who I drive around communities, when communities are taking care and maintaining their fields, it really does set a community apart, um, in my mind. Um, it looks at they're investing in their their youth, they're investing in their their fields, their open space. Um, there's an aesthetic to it that I think people can appreciate. And with the free cash number that we shared earlier, we have the capacity to address this through the free cash, one-time spend. Allow us to reduce the requirement on the maintenance from our guys in the field and deliver better product to TAA, resulting in more fees coming back to the town.
Um, if I could jump in before Dick, you go to your other points and still to keep on this one, it looks like this is three components. The forty-five thousand is to level and regrade, to edge it and to put new sod down. So Dick, are you proposing to not level and regrade, but just to edge and put new sod?
No, you don't. You don't put the sod on on undulating, on undulating areas. Um, I I'm not sure that you're talking about putting sod everywhere. I'm not sure where you're talking, were you talking about sodding six fields? Six fields?
In the infields, correct.
Wow.
And uh, around the back, around the back of the um, the diamond. So that it it doesn't include the entire fields. It's just the edges on the back and the part between the and the little league fields, sixty feet, sixty feet by sixty and sixty, obviously. Um, we have one ninety-foot field that we would consider doing that treatment to. We did it to one field last year, got a great response from the TAA and and the parents and the kids who were able to use it. And we're really excited to be able to deliver on this one. Um, in in do what we said we were going to do, which is we've addressed the uh, the issues that were identified by by those who use it.
Could I just know what the six fields are? Four at Pie Brook Park, one or two at Clock Park?
Three fields at Pie, one we've already done. If you if you go up there, you'll see one of the fields has been improved last year. Um, so we have other three that we'll maintain, we'll update. There's two over at Clock, which we would update, and then we would look at Proctor as the, as a sixth.
Okay.
Dick, you want to, would you prefer not to do anything to the fields or are you looking at kind of making this less impactful? What would you think?
What I would look for is to use, to do as we've done in the past, continue to plant grass. Hopefully, the the fields on the landfill will be able to take up because we can, we can water those fields. The other fields, which are not watered, will have to put up with uh, we planted seed at the right time or we planted seed and didn't do anything. It was the wrong time. We'll plant it again, plant it again. Oh, we got a good watering, good. And uh, do the kind of fertilizing that we should be doing. And perhaps also if you got wet weather, you've had wet weather, the soil's soft to aerate the uh, the fields. Those are things that we can do. Or uh, it seems to me that, I know that Steve Shepard went out to uh, private contractors to do some of those things, uh, such as fertilizers. You know, they have all the equipment and they just do a whole bunch of fertilizing and and go on from there. So in other words, we're going to go ahead and use um, resources and nature to grow those fields, which may burn if something happens um, and in the future, and then you do it again. That's the way it happens. That's the way it has to happen. The good news is we are obligated to water regardless of the circumstances, the the landfill, the top of the landfill. So that that's a good place to plant grass.
I will just say that uh, in in this is an area, there are a lot of areas where I can't speak with a lot of experience. This is one I can. Uh, as a reminder, I was the president of Lynn Youth Soccer for five or six years. We were in charge of ten acres of field uh, in Lynn. And I know that chasing after bad fields with small fixes is just an endless pit of money. You're worried about money. Sure, the money you put in in any given month or season is going to be a smaller number than this. But over time, it's going to add up to at least that, if not more, and for that, you will get a substandard project. At some point, you need to do an overall fix of the field and then maintain it better going forward. You're not going to be able to do this with nature in the same things that we've been doing for years. The same things we've been doing for years got us where we are right now. I I, go ahead, Cam.
I was just gonna say, do we have liability issues if there are kids running in the outfield and, you know, they they fall and break their leg or sprain their ankle or something? I mean, look, I, it's not me. I'm not a litigious guy. My family's not litigious, but do we run the risk of something happening and we being liable if if that scenario plays out? I I don't know the answer.
Um, so if if, it kind of goes back to old English law, you can't sue the king. Um, if it's something that we're made aware of, a deficiency, and somebody were to get hurt and we need to repair it in a timely fashion, we could be liable for injury or or what have you and the cost. Um, in in this case, I don't know if we'd be liable because we've been, we've gotten writing complaints about the conditions of the fields and the lips and such. If someone took one in the face, um, that's one too many people in my mind if it was caused by any conditions that we could have addressed through this. Um, so I, it's hard to say, Mr. Brown, I think that in, we 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 know that anyone can sue anybody and the towns, obviously, um, if somebody were to get hurt, could potentially at least have to spend some legal fees to argue it. If not, um, if not, actually have to pay something out. I couldn't say definitively, but um, it doesn't.
It it's it's okay. And Boyd, thanks for giving me the question. I I I was just curious if there was an obvious answer.
If we don't charge for anything, the municipalities have a protection from being uh, sued uh, if there's an injury. If somebody were able to prove a gross negligence, which is usually difficult to do, then you can potentially take it to court, but it's very, very difficult. If you're charging for it, it's a different story. Then then you're like any industry and you need to pay for those things. However.
And we are charging.
And we're charging little league, right?
Undulations are not, I don't see how undulations are something that represents a safety issue. It may have a a appearance issue, but it does not, in my mind, have a safety issue. And when you talk about the landfill and the depression of it, it is not holes that occur. We have a very strong membrane with the soils on top of that. So that that tends to make, if there's a hole, so to speak, way underneath it, it doesn't create a hole on top because we have this extra layer at the, near the surface, which is uh, the barrier for water to not enter the landfill.
Um, Boyd, you were going to say something?
I was gonna say that I'm 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 in favor of leaving this thing just like it is because I think it gives our people the ability to repair the fields as they see fit. Uh, I'm not going to spend my time walking around uh, the Clock Park or Pie Brook Park trying to find out where we ought to fill a hole or find out where we ought to do this. Uh, I'm trying to give our people the ability to function and do what they think is necessary uh, with input from TAA, from other organizations uh, about the fact that we got to do something with that and do it when it's significant, when it's when it's relative. Let's get on with it.
Yeah, the intention from, the intention from uh, about about ten years ago, a little less, uh, when we knew that we had to maintain that the surface was in fact to create a warrant article such as this, it happened to be over five years, to in fact, maintain it, but not to grade it to a quote, laser level condition because we understood that it would continue to take maintenance. And so we had the money to get soils that we needed to fill it in. And if we needed to have a contractor do some work, but it was not intended to maintain something which you can't maintain based on the definition. It'll, you can put this money in one time on the landfill, but it's going to be affected uh, the next month, the next year, whatever, because of the conditions under the soil.
If I could just have us move on, we're going to come back and we're going to vote.
I just want to say one, one more thing, Lynn, excuse me. Um, Dick, your whole argument's been about Pie Brook, okay? There are other, there are other parks that we got to do the same thing with. I've received complaints about the the field at Proctor School. I've received complaints about the Clock Park thing. Pie Brook is one issue and it's a unique kind of thing. And we recognize that it's going to undulate and we'll do what we need to do to help that. But we got other fields we got to do too, and I want to move on.
Kevin, did you have one last thing to close us on this?
It's financially speaking, I know we spent a lot of time on the, on that, the considerations of the cost here. It's a two and a half year payback because the fees that come in from TAA as a result of the investment. Second, the, we have an over guideline request of ten thousand dollars for um, for the, for for this particular type of use for the, for the maintenance of the fields, which with this warrant article, the one-time spend, that will also come out of the budget as as well to help balance the budget this year. And I I really can't emphasize, we talk about efficiencies and making sure we're getting the most out of our guys. If we can get our guys ahead on this, especially in this department, they'll be at a much better starting place and they'll be able to put their resources to use in a much better way. Um, so that's it. Thank you.
Um, all right, moving on to Article thirty, the storm um, sewer system. And again, my only comment right up front is the or it's equivalent could come out in this one as well.
Copy and paste it, you can see. I apologize for that.
No problem. Okay, any questions on this one, other than wording and editing?
This is on MS four?
Yes, MS four.
Um, did I send you a list of changed names? Uh, I I I will change the name for this municipal stormwater. I I think it's important because it's just very confusing to somebody who doesn't know anything to get started out. I'll I'll give you a different name for it. I'll I'll work on that. I thought I sent one already. Um, so i- i- in this particular case, I'm trying to really figure out what we're doing. Perform required work, including reporting, uh, including uh, report, yeah, reports. What are we actually doing here? I I would be willing to to change it for example, just I I offer this because it may say what we really want. Uh, oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, I had the same question, too. I don't think anyone will really understand what this is if we have a way of simplifying what we're actually doing and why we need fifty thousand now. Is this like an annual cost? And again, we have another one-time bump because something happened or things weren't done?
Yeah, we had a discount the last four years with MS four, when the MS four rolled out, five years. Uh, ten thousand dollars was done by Jim McDougall. He did the reporting component of it. Um, we checked the boxes with the state. We have a consultant that's come on um, to take a quick, high-level analysis of what we've done in the requirements the past five years, as well as the work going forward and what the cost would be. General estimates are, that we've been told is it could cost forty, fifty thousand dollars a year to have a consultant perform the work around MS four requirements. That said, we believe right now we have a one-time infusion, fifty thousand to cover any sh- shortfalls or or work that we should or could have done previously to get us caught up. And then for at least this year, if not, if there's money left over to put parlayed into a future year as well, this will allow us to get caught up and be well-positioned in the, for the next year's budget. We have ten thousand dollars asked in the MS four uh, as an over asking. The initial department-level budget had fifty thousand in it, but it was just too big of a number. So this was the way to allow us to keep the operation numbers down by having the free cash, again, that we have available to us this year to get ahead. Um, and so in a year's time, Madam Chair, we might be coming back now that we have a better understanding of what's needed going forward and the actual costs with a new new consultant coming on. But for right now, this fifty will allow us to get through this year and the prior, caught up on the prior years, if necessary.
So is it mainly reporting or is there actually some activity that we have to do to meet MS four guidelines?
I am not the resident expert on MS four, I'll admit that, but I do know enough to say that it's a combination of both. So there's reporting standards that are required and I believe there's physical things towns and and cities are required to do to address the um, the the MS four requirements. And we're getting through what's needed right now um, by that outside consultant to understand what what we need, what we need to do to get caught up, if if anything, we believe there is some work there and what the cost will be. So that fifty thousand is highlighted in yellow because we're waiting for that number to come in of the estimate to do that type of work.
So we have a consultant now doing some work to tell us what we're going to need to do? So this consultant then is going to do the work that's been identified by our first consultant?
The consultant who come, well, the first consultant, if you think Jim McDougall is the first consultant.
That's that's the question. Why do we use the name Jim McDougall? So I know which one is, which is which.
Sure. So Jim McDougall for the last handful of years was our consultant. He's he's elected not to continue to participate. So we brought on an outside consultant to assess, we're taking this over now, what, you know, from Jim, we've got to do it somehow going forward.
Jim's out of the picture right now. He's no longer doing anything.
So now we need to address the issue at hand and we've got some verbal quotes at forty to fifty thousand dollars annually to do the reporting and the required work um, on an ongoing basis. What we decided, what we talked about was, let's understand what the prior work is necessary to get us caught up. So we don't have this, this annual increase in the operating budget that's greater than the actual need because we haven't, there's certain things that may have needed to be have done, may have needed to be done that weren't. Let's get caught up. Let's get. have needed to be done that weren't. Let's get caught up. Let's get secure for this current year, the requirements. And then we'll give us a chance to reassess, have we positioned ourselves well enough that it's 10,000 next year in an over ask? Is it zero in the over ask? Is it 30,000? We don't know because we don't, we need, we don't have an engineer on staff to could, or a planner who could read that and tell us directly what we have. So we have to go to the outside for that initial assessment of what, what we're missing, the expertise that's associated with that.
So the work that wasn't done, is that because our volunteer didn't have enough time to address it? Why didn't it get done?
Um, I don't know for certain what the breadth of that is. Um, and, and I would hesitate to comment directly that what that looks like and what, what the reasons behind it. I know that I, the day I arrived, I was told that Jim McDougall and the cost that came along with him to do the MS4 was a significant discount. Um, and they were grateful to have him and he's done a fantastic job for us. Um, but now that he's left, somebody else takes over and they need to have a chance to sort of assess where we're at. If there's other things that need to happen and there's an indication that there were certain things that will need to happen. Um, but yes, there was a significant discount because the person was a local resident, uh, helping the town out.
A little bit you get what you pay for because I, I don't want to throw Jim under the bus at town meeting, but someone's going to ask, why weren't all these things done? Why did we get into this position?
And I'm probably a week away. I gave a deadline at the end of next week for the consultant to get back to us what those were. So we can have a more clear conversation. I'm getting, the picture was very broad two months ago, and now it's getting a little clearer, a little clearer. I'm waiting for that final assessment that Heidi's helping organize with the consultant to give us that definitive. I can give probably a better answer next week. Maybe it's a better way to put it.
It's probably worth waiting then, instead of diving into things that can't be answered yet because we don't have the questions. Is there anything that anyone would like to raise at this point? So when, um, Kevin goes back and is working with these folks to get the answers, if there's anything specific you want answered, better to raise it now?
I read this, I read this as it's something we have to do. The article would fund a consultant, um, for certain required work, including reporting as it relates to the EPA. So, so this warrant is for something that, I mean, the answer is yes, we have to do something and we don't know the number. Or is it not, is required the wrong word? I'm, I'm sorry, I.
Nope, you're a hundred percent right, Mr. Brown. It's, it's required work. One way or the other, we're gonna have to pay for it. And we can build into the operating budget going forward today, or we can use the free cash to get us caught up, assess this year, and then have a better number rather than over budgeting, because we'd have to have a really conservative number into the budget rather than over budgeting and having that live through this year, potentially beyond. It gives us, buys us a little bit of time in this free cash allocation at the end of the day to get the, address the requirements from the EPA.
Can we address it all at once quickly with this phone? Are we liable for penalties from the state?
We are. Um, they have not come down very hard to date on communities, communities all over the Commonwealth or in different places with it, were not unusual as a small community that we may or may not be, have some work to catch up. Um, we're not necessarily behind, I would say from that perspective, but from the guidelines and the regulatory stance, there are certain things each year you're required to do. Um, and I think communities that are like cities, in essence, that have engineering staff, um, have people who are dedicated to this type of work or closely dedicated to this work to complete the requirements each year or ensure that they're being, uh, being met.
The person who's managed this for many years has been Dave Bond, and then he was doing it as the highway superintendent, and then he got the stipend for stormwater and brought it under that. Uh, I'm suggesting that perhaps, uh, it would be appropriate to have Dave join us at a meeting here and give us his perspectives as to the history. I'm sure he has a lot of stories to tell us about the history. And also what his perspectives are as to why we don't have a complete one. Now, Jim McDougall feels that what we've done the past years, the past three years that he did it, were complete. So it'd be very interesting and we need that, as you point out, Lynn, the data that tells us what the problems are. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised, I wouldn't be, uh, adverse to asking Dave what he thinks about those things and then maybe even going back to Jim McDougall to understand what they are, because this is just big money. If, this is a couple thousand dollars, maybe we wouldn't spend as much time on it, but there's a lot of money and it is important because there was a time that the town was fined, uh, $3,000, I would say probably back around, um, 2010, 2012, somewhere in there, uh, 3,000 for not having submitted a report on time. It wasn't because we just didn't do it. Uh, Dave Bond will have more data, data on that, but that's my suggestion. Get him to tell us.
I, I, I think that's excellent. I think that's an excellent suggestion and I'd be willing to do that uh, for the board if you think it's appropriate. I'd be glad to talk to Dave Bond and Jim McDougall, uh, together. If I can arrange that and come back to you guys with the report.
Kevin? If I could, I, I'd really like to get the report back from the consultant before anyone jumps ahead and makes any assumptions. I, I know that there's an indication that there's, there's needs that need to be addressed from prior years and going forward. I'm probably, like I said, a week away from having that report that I can look through, understand, share with the board. And then that can help us inform what questions we ask, identify the needs going forward. I'm hopeful, maybe the report comes back and says, everything's A-OK, no needs. Um, but the initial conversations we had is that there's certain things that we could take on further. So if it's okay, I would respectfully ask that we, we pause maybe until I get that report that we're working on right now and then.
Because then you'll have specifics to talk with them. And thank you, Boyd, for offering. I think once we get this report, we can see next steps.
I'm sorry.
As I said, thank you for offering. I think once we get this report back from Kevin, we'll know next steps and who to bring in and, and how to proceed.
And I, and I agree with you. I'm not excited about throwing, uh, Jim McDougall under the bus.
I'm not. I like.
Okay, great. Let's move on to the 31st.
Can we just understand in this one though, what, what would be happening in that $50,000? Is it all essentially reports, paper, things like that? Or is?
We don't know yet, I would say.
You, you don't know that there's any, is there any digging involved, so to speak?
So the report that they're doing right now for us will tell us that, answer that question for us.
So we have to wait a week?
Next.
To find out. Okay, uh, the, we could have, re-codification of zoning bylaws. Um, the only thing I would throw out here before you get the, and actually, it doesn't look like anything changed in here, but I don't know that the average person would know what we, what codification is and why that's a thing we need to do or who that's going to benefit. I actually had to look up the word codification to find out. And it, and it talked about reorganizing and update, updating, uh, for reliability and no conflicts. And I thought, I really don't know what it is. So probably the average person would have that question too.
There are going to be people that think it has something to do with fishing.
Or, uh, you know, updating the zoning laws when nothing's coming before them. So it's like, what is this actually doing? Is it making it easier to read? Is it kind of aligning and pulling in all the votes that have already taken place, but our bylaws have not been updated? Because I think somewhere out of this, we want to show the benefit to the, the resident, which is anyone who needs access to the zoning bylaws is getting accurate and current, so they don't have to do any rework, or they're not taken down the wrong path. But maybe some clarification as to what it's doing for the resident and really what this is might be helpful in that one.
Sure, I'll work on.
Somewhat of a piece from last year, though. We had, uh, a cost for the codification. I think in last year, I know to implement it, I don't know if that same wording was there. I think she'd go back and check what we had in the warrant last year, or go back and look if we did a previous warrant a couple of years before that. Yes, when we contracted for that, we may have had that then. But the people, we, we've talked about it. It'd be nice to clarify it though, as you point out, put additional information as to what it represents.
And that's a good suggestion, Dick, that we might have the wording already so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. As you're right, we did do it the first phase, one or two years ago.
There was a significant amount of work done last year on this issue, and I don't know whether, uh, it provided any funding or not, and maybe that was the issue.
Yeah, it was the first part of this. So this is the second part, which is zoning. All the other bylaws were in the first piece, as I remember. And there probably was a description there of, of what codification is or what that's going to do for people. So if we can just lift that wording perhaps.
Madam Chair, if it's okay, I know, I don't want to go backwards, but there was one thing I, I wanted to just make sure I said out loud, and that's going back to Article, um, 28. That's the removal. Um, we talked about the last meeting about the tree plantings, and I did just, I know that there's some conversation on social media about the the concern about people removing trees, National Grid, removing trees. I am conscious that there are a number of people in the community that really would not like to see any trees taken down, healthy, unhealthy, uh, hazardous, non-hazardous. Um, one idea with the tree planting, if we were to consider that, um, and we don't have to get into it tonight, is that in the event that we do, are successful with Article 28, I find it might be helpful to be able to offer people that if they have an issue with that hazardous tree coming down, that we'll either replant in place or close to it if it's appropriate, or replace that tree in another location in town. So that if people are concerned about trees coming down, there's a tree that's going up. Now, it won't be a mature tree, obviously, but it's certainly something I, I, um, I reflected on since our last conversation and I, I, I certainly wanted to just pose that from an operational standpoint. And also from a political standpoint, there might be some, some benefit to, to keeping this at least up for conversation, um, for the time being. But, um, that's my piece. If you, if you want it out, it will come out. I, I just wanted to make sure I made mention of that and some additional thoughts behind it.
Do we know, Kevin, are there places in town that could use trees where they are fit? Instead of just kind of willy-nilly, we took one down, so we're putting it up here, but does it make sense? Because we've talked before about some of the trees even in front of town hall, um, from an aesthetic point of view, some could come down to enable you to see the really beautiful buildings a little bit better. So we just don't want to randomly plant.
No, and it would be very thoughtful. So for instance, if that, one of the larger trees that are towards the end of their life out front, um, comes down in a storm or we elect to take it down using these funds, for example, we would then have another pot of money that would allow us to then replant, say, a much smaller tree that flowers that gives us some nice aesthetics in the springtime, um, that won't grow as tall and as large, potentially hazardous in the future. Um, if that makes sense, or we open it up for the Vista if we choose to do that too. Um, but there's certainly, um, I, I don't think we'd have a shortfall of locations where we could plant them, whether it's in the downtown area, historic area or other. Um, but it, I think the first.
Downtown, in the downtown one? We, we don't have a shortage?
I think that we could identify locations for trees if we chose to. When we had the donation from the Institution for Savings, for example, we planted them along, uh, Washington Street. One of those has died, but we don't have the monies to replace that tree, for example. That would be one where that came out and we had trees somewhere else come down. We could say we're going to plant a light tree down here in this location. Um, there's a tree, for example, that came down on the, uh, on our property on the right of way on the rail trail. Um, we might, that might be, uh, during one of the storms in the spring and the neighbor was very concerned open, how much it now created openness. Um, that might be a candidate to put a tree there. But I think the first place we would look, in my mind, and it would be, can we replace it in the location that the, the dying or decaying tree that we took down, uh, was located? And if that is the case, then that, that's an easy one. If it's not, then we'd have to let the resident know we're going to plant it elsewhere.
Kevin, can I interrupt here just for a second?
Absolutely.
Cam's got about five minutes left until he wants a hard stop. Uh, I think that was Cam. Um, last week we had tree removal and planting. And we took issue with the words, uh, with planting. Can I make it clearer by just saying tree removal and replacement?
Well, I think.
That gives you the option of replacing when necessary?
I, I think what we're talking about here is in fact a wholly separate article on tree planting to come right after. So tree removal would still stand alone, and then there would be a, an immediately following new article on tree planting. Um, and that way we do separate, right? So as a town, and we would give the town the option, uh, you know, not for us to decide, but the town to decide. Yes, tree removal is one thing, tree planting is another. Uh, but I agree with Kevin that I, I think A, I would support it just in the actual, you know, idea of planting trees. But I also think that if we all agree that tree removal is important, that this may soften that for some people who, who would be concerned even in safety issues of removing a tree. If we said, well, yeah, we're going to remove these trees, but for every tree we remove, we will replace it, uh, somewhere in town, if not in that exact spot. Uh, and to, to Kevin's point, it doesn't have to be another majestic oak, you know, it can be a completely different kind of tree that might be more befitting of the area, more safe in that area even when it grows full. So all of that is to answer Boyd's question and to say, I support the idea.
Not a, not a bad idea. I, I give you guys a history lesson for you young guys.
We don't have time right now, Boyd.
They have a tree replacement thing. He, he used to be able to call Wally Nealon and say, Wally, I want to, can you put me a tree on, on my piece of property? And he'd say, yeah, dude, you dig the hole and we'll come out and put it in. I had two of them in my front yard over on Ridge Road.
Kevin, could you come back at the next meeting with more information on this? Because we don't really know how many trees are coming down or how many could potentially go up, what the dollar value is, and we can talk about it at the next meeting?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
So once, so once again, if I may, it happens to be the same name with a different hat on. Perhaps Dave Bond could come in and discuss the inventory of trees that he showed you. I think it might be helpful to us.
Um, yeah, he's compa, he's compiling that for me now. So once we have that, I'll, we'll certainly share that and I can see if Dave's available for a future meeting.
So we have a couple of things we could talk with David on.
Good to see him again.
And his tree warden hat.
Okay, um, moving on, the master plan, and this will probably be, Cam, we have two minutes.
It's good. No, 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 no. I, I, I can, I, I can finish this.
Okay, um, okay. I'll turn it over to Kevin for the, the master plan. The only thing I'll throw out there is I'm assuming that 25/6 is still in flux because that's super precise. And we haven't gotten the number.
Yeah, so that's, that is the numbers for the, the cost with, um, the leftover money from the, uh, copper mine road improvement. And until we go to RFP and we know for certain what the cost will be on the master plan, we're sort of right now in a placeholder. I would say this, that, um, I spoke with, uh, Catherine on this yesterday. And her and I, she brought it up and I agree with her that this should more appropriately looked at as an STM uh, transfer than a, uh, warrant article. And, um, just based on historical precedent of what we use the STM for. And so I want to pose this at some point, possibly coming out of this order, of this warrant and going into the STM warrant. And so, um, that, that's, that's just a mechanical item or change or, or that I want to make sure I reference. The fact that we're using old article money for a new article, um, STM seems to be more appropriate.
Okay, I'll open it to the board to say, do you have any questions for Kevin about this particular article or any concerns?
I, I have some text that in the, uh, in the wording here, actually, in front of me, it's the motion. But, uh, expanded by the Select Board to fund a consult, consultant to assist in preparing a town-wide master plan. In other words, it gives the people a greater understanding of what this dollar is paying for. Is that okay? Something like that?
That sounds great. I like that a lot.
These, I'm going to send you these one. Okay.
It sounds good.
Yep. I have a couple of tweaks too, Kevin, but they're really minor, so I'll send along those. Anyone have any other input to Kevin on this one?
I don't, I don't agree with this one, if that's, if that's the input you want, but I don't think that's.
Yes. That's the input we'd like at this point, to get a handle on how people are feeling about moving this money over to support the master plan. So it looks like the master plan is coming in over 100,000. That's what it seems like this point. You know, we could look to cut out components that gets that dollar value down.
But the 25/6, Lynn, you're saying that the 25/6 is the overage of, is to cover us for the overage of the anticipated 100,000. Okay.
Right. We have a grant for 100,000 and Kevin in discussions think it's going to come in more. Kevin and Martha.
And we do to some extent have some potential, uh, flexibility in, in the, uh, sense that we can start with 100,000 and then have these add-ins and not have the add-in, see how we're going with it. Maybe we can get things in under 100,000, not sure. Okay. Uh, then next year, uh, in May, appropriate money at STM. Uh, then next year, uh, in May, appropriate money at STM for something twenty-six thousand dollars if, if that's the appropriate thing that we need. Uh, my, my original thing was if the, we need more than a hundred thousand, the grant should have provided it for us, but I understand the max on the grant is a hundred thousand. But, uh, some, something's wrong when the grant thinks it gave us enough money and we don't have enough. We, I think we just have to trim our sails a little bit and be more practical, but that's my sense.
Uh, I remain in support of this. I believe a master plan is so important and vital and will effectively pay us back in time that, uh, I want to do it right.
A good thing happened though was for somebody to try to, uh, at a back of an envelope, tell us how it's going to pay us back. I think that, that might be good too.
Well, I agree. I also, I also agree with what you said, Dick. I think that trimming our sales and, you know, someone, someone who came up with that number and said this is the right number, I, I, I do think it's, it's worth digging in a little bit more and seeing if we can't negotiate. It's not the right word, but you know, just get a sense of, is there an area where we could, you know, maybe save ten, fifteen thousand dollars? Um, I would be all for that.
Kevin, will we have that input prior to the, the warrant being finalized?
Yeah, so where, my hope is on March first, we, at the, um, planning meeting, planning board meeting, they'll bring this up, the RFP that's been redlined by Martha. That will then go live on the second. We'll put it out for three weeks. We'll have it before the end of the month, before the end of March. It'll be tight, but the hope is that we'll have pricing back at that point. Um, that'll give us a better sense of what the actual is. Now, if it comes in at a hundred thousand dollars, we won't need the article clearly. If it comes back higher, um, we might. One of the things in the RFP that we're looking at doing too is base requirements in the RFP and then maybe have some add-ons of what it would cost to do another community meeting, a third community meeting, um, or some other reporting standards. So that way, when we get the RFP back, we can take a call without having to go back out and say, okay, we're willing to spend another ten thousand because that's a really important component of it, or, or maybe not, um, but it'll give us some options.
We have to have this finalized by the end of March, am I remembering right, when you told us before? Um, if the RFP goes out, yeah, so if the RFP goes out on the second, um, a, a couple of weeks to get responses back and to do, and then another week for the evaluation. So we're coming down to the wire, but all it is is a matter of pulling this article out if we find that we can exist within the hundred thousand.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to be really tight. Um, this reminds me of the article last year, but we did it. Um, the hope in this one will be that, um, we post it on the second, we have, it has to be out on, it has to be out for two weeks and a day, a minimum when you put an RFP on the street. And so we'll probably do three weeks, which will get us that responses due the last week when we're finalizing the last little tweaks to the warrant, we'll get a number back. And we can, we can roll from, we can use that based on, uh, ahead of printing. That's it's a very concise timeline we're working under, but that's the, the, the hope that we have, um, with regards to this.
Okay. Then we'll wait for that to come back in to make a final decision. Um, if there are any other concerns or comments or edits for Kevin, if we do move forward with this, if we can have this all ready to go in the language that we're comfortable with, and then we decide to pull or not pull at the end.
I just had a little bit of comments and explanation there, but that's, I'll send it in.
Okay. Okay, um, it looks like we don't have to go through thirty-three and thirty-four. We're still waiting on verbiage to come in.
I beg your pardon. I do have to roll. I, I do have to roll. So, um, I'll, I'll bug out here and follow up with, uh, Kevin.
Yeah.
After this.
Okay, great, Cam. And well, we can touch base later. There's another potential article coming in and I can brief you on that later.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Enjoy your dinner.
So long. So long.
Okay, so we're still waiting for thirty-three and thirty-four to come in from the school, Kevin?
We expect two changes, the ones that we referenced, the, um, typographical error and the DSE required one. There is a third one potentially coming to us at the man chair referencing that. It's, uh, was discussed, um, at the FinCom meeting and what it is, is an article that would appropriate funds that come back to the town from Masconomic into a capital, capital stabilization fund at Masconomic. And nowadays be an appropriation at town meeting. So for instance, we received back a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in, in debt service this, this year. We would take out of a free cash appropriation, because that's new free cash that's falling in and put it, move it forward, um, into a warrant article to be appropriated. There's some draft language that I received late this afternoon from Alyssa Ogden on what they're sort of working on in Middleton. Middleton's taking the lead on this. Um, I've asked them to get on the next agenda, so they might be joining us next Wednesday, the school committee, that is, to discuss what their actual ask is, because we've been working under some assumptions so far. But I, as Mr. Gant said during the FinCom meeting, you're really, the ask is from you guys. You need to come and present it to us what you're looking for. So they're, they're working on that so that at the next meeting, they can bring that to us.
Just a quick update on that. Um, Zilly mentioned that their capital plan is out of date. They've been trying to work on updating that capital plan to be able to identify the next bonded project from Masco. What's the highest need? And she said it may be the HVAC, but they don't know. They haven't had the time because of COVID to update that plan and put the plans together. So this, whatever it is, and I think is one forty-three for all three towns, Kevin? And it would be our share of that one forty-three, or are we totally the one forty-three?
I think for purposes, I think the article, it would, it, I don't know what the dollar amount is at this time, but I think that the, the concept is what they're trying to get the towns on board with. And I think Middleton said too that the, they're not coming along and providing these monies into the stabilization fund without the other two communities coming with them. So they, and I get that because if they're contributing to a capital stabilization fund and the other communities are not, then they're footing the bill at the end of the day or more a proportion higher potentially. So, um, we'll know, I think, next week with what buckets, if it's the E and D, if it's the debt service, if it's other, what their realm of types of monies they're asking us to consider moving over to.
Yeah, Zilly had said it's absolutely not E and D. It is a refund. It is the refund from the, the bond that they took out. So they're getting that check back.
One time.
Right. And so they would like to bring in a consultant to actually update that capital plan and identify their next bonded project. Um, she shared, Kevin, you actually sent over the question to her and, and she called me to let me know the outcome. I was concerned because our capital stabilization requires the town to vote on any expenditure and it has to be two-thirds vote. But in the case of the school, they are the legislature. So once that money goes in, the school committee can vote to spend the money. So they wouldn't have to come back to a special town meeting or to the regular town meeting to ask for permission to use those monies. And I also asked whether or not they had regular annual, um, input to the capitalization fund. What do they usually put into it? And she said, really nothing. It's just interest bearing. They really don't have a regular program where they put money into that plan, to her knowledge, but they were having a meeting tonight starting at six-thirty where they were going to discuss all that and she was going to make sure what she was sharing was correct. But they're going to come back to us. So it's very preliminary. We don't know if they're even going to agree, um, to want to do this. And they'll come back, as Kevin mentioned, and explain in more detail whether that's an article they're going to ask us to consider for the warrant.
So, so let's see if I can clarify what, what they have. They have a stabilization fund. I don't know of any capital stabilization fund. There, there's only one stabilization fund that they have that I know of, and it's a general stabilization fund. Is, do you have, is that what you agree with?
And my-
Um, I, I don't know if she gave it the name capital. She was saying stabilization fund, so it very well could be the fund you're talking about, Dick.
Again, only one and the towns gave them permission to have a stabilization fund. Knowing that the money that went in there, they had total control over without the towns being able to do anything. Okay.
Yep. So that, that will come up later. So that's the third, Kevin, for the, for this area for Masco, these two and potentially that article.
Again, specifically about that, this one-time thing, how to handle it is, is what the issue is.
Right. And I, I think Mike Hartman had put the one forty-three, the hundred and forty-three thousand into the model thinking that was money that was coming back to us and would help balance the budget. So now if that goes back out again, um, you know, that has to be considered. I don't know if it's coming from free cash, Kevin, as you mentioned. Um, so, but it is going to impact his model. So, um, okay, uh, moving on, it looks like Article thirty-five, um, is out. Um, so Article thirty-six, retiring of school building debt. Um, I'm not sure if we talked about this at all, but, um, any questions from people on this? There's unused funds from the debt that was taken out for the Proctor and Stewart roofs. We didn't use about two million of it, and so they're looking to retire it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to understand it myself. I, I should know the answer to this, but I, I, the final cost of the project or to the town? See, see the, the, the-
I think to the town. Wasn't it ten million total?
So I know-
We don't need to get the answer now, but we do need to understand what that is. So we can, we, we're very clear as to what, what it is that we're saying is left. We, we don't necessarily have to say anything about what's left over here. We can just say to, to rescind that, to, uh, take out that much money. The, uh, whatever's not, uh, used, what is it?
I think this is-
But-
I think this is to the town.
But it has to be clear.
Um, I think leaving it in actually is a good thing. It shows that the town came in way under budget and a good job was done. The town approved them spending seven plus million and they only spent a little over five million.
But that, well, that, that's what we have to understand though. If that's, if that's what it is, that's great, but I'm not sure that's what it is.
I can explain it if you'd like.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yeah, so what was appropriated at town meeting was seven million point, seven, seven million, six fifty-one, seven fifty-seven. We had to borrow the full amount, even though we were getting the forty-one point ten percent. So roughly, we, well, what we borrowed was five million, two fifty-nine, zero sixty-three. And then, so it's the difference between the cost of the project and what we, the, the amount that we borrowed that we will, um, rescind at this point. Does that clarify it, Dick?
Well, I think the final, the final cost of the town, I, I think what you want to put in, the final cost of the project was seven million, whatever the heck it was. And, uh, s- somehow that sounds like, as you put it, Lynn, that we came in way under budget, which is not the case.
Well, the, the final, the cost of the town for the project was seven million, five forty-six, zero two zero. So it was under the seven million, the seven point six.
So my wording in the-
But not two million on it.
The final cost of the project or the final cost to the town was five million. And I can write in there too, if you'd like, that part of that is, is a result of the MSBA reimbursement program.
Yeah, because it's really not the-
Yeah, and Kevin, I can give you that number, but roughly we, 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 we received two point three million from the MSBA. So I can give you the exact number on that.
I don't think the five thou, I don't think the five million and the two, three, nine million mean anything. That's just, you have to explain SBA and all that sort of thing. That's not as important at this point as saying that the, uh, appropriate, the, uh, bonding was set for whatever, seven million, whatever, and the actual, uh, oh, I see. You can't do that. All right, never mind, never mind. Yeah, we can work to clarify the details, I guess, to make sure it's clear.
Yeah.
I, I, I've got some language I just jotted down. I think they'll clarify it. So I'll, I'll, I'll put a little bit more information into that, into that section.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Um, for Articles thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine, are we close to knowing what those dollar amounts are that go in for each of them?
Those are really decided at the very last stage of the process with the FinCom, once we know what all of our costs are and what all of our revenues are going to be projected. Um, this, the, the three hundred and forty is, um, there's guidelines associated, the financial guidelines that are associated with the contribution annually and the increasing amount every year until we hit five hundred thousand. Uh, the capital stabilization fund, I believe a hundred has been the number they've used historically and the twenty-five for the ca, uh, general stabilization has been the number that's been used historically. I do know two years ago though, we put some additional monies in there because of the unknown COVID impacts as well. So, um, but really FinCom will dictate how that free cash is allocated.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, that's it then, other than the free cash number, which comes at the very end after everything is reconciled. Okay, so that's it for the new content. Um, I'm, I'm really hesitant to go through editing and tweaking of the, um, updated articles, you know, that we already discussed, fourteen through twenty-six. So I'd like to suggest that we send our edits to Kevin to consider. Unless there's something drastically out of line where the content doesn't mean what we thought it meant. Um, we can just send him our edits instead of going through them all tonight. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yes. So, so can we, uh, just talk then about the, the versions and what you have? If you get these edits, what would, what would you wind up doing with them?
So what I have now with the version two, I have additional information, for instance, the school and the type of, the floor material to add language there. We talked about that last meeting. I received that after version two was sent out.
Not, not so much of the details of what it's going to be, but what will the condition be? I was a little surprised to see a version two that had a lot of markup in it. Normally a version i- is gathering all the things that have been given and they're assumed into it and it comes with no, no markup in it. And a revision is the one that winds up getting the markup. It makes it, in other words, the version is a place where we bring a whole bunch of stuff together and then you can see what you add on the next time is changes to that version. If you want, we can chat about it at some point then.
No, I understand. So these version is a clean version with accepted changes. But I, I, I obviously I left those in there so people could follow sort of the, the edits from the last.
It's new.
So would this be two point one? Because it's not accepted, it would still be a markup to show us what changed since we're already at version two?
There was no two point O.
Is this version two?
Two point O one is this version.
This is two point O one.
So I could, I, yeah, so I can incorporate the changes into a version two point O two based on what Mr. Gant sends and what I've already collected. And then send a version three, send the version two with the edits in addition with a version three that has a clean markup. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Gant?
Ju- just be, yeah. One, that a version three is going to have no markups in it. They, they've all been accepted, so to speak.
But we have to go through and accept them. So we need another meeting before version three can come out, right? Because we're going to have markups from tonight's discussion.
So in essence, if we went through this, the edits that were made on the, the ones we haven't covered and we accept what was done, the, the edits made, that would be a clean version, but I haven't incorporated any edits from the board at this time. So I don't know if that's appropriate to, to accept those changes without seeing incorporating your edits.
So, so you, you don't have to accept them, then just make it a new ver, a, a new, uh, release. We can leave all the things in there, but, but once we have, uh, once it comes together that we've got a, a bunch of edits in there, then create the version, which is accepting the edits.
So how about this? How about he incorporates everything? What we discussed tonight plus what everybody is sending him, it comes up with two point O two.
Two.
At the next, yes. Then at the next meeting, we will say, accept, accept or change, and then the next will be version three. Sound okay?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, Kevin?
That sounds great. If you could send me, um, edits of this, I know, um, I know Mr. Gant, you've been working on it, I'm sure you have as well. If you could send me these by, um, end of the day tomorrow, I could, I'll, I'll be sure to start working on it on Friday, uh, Thursday night. It's a Friday. If I can, try to get something out, um, on Monday, like we've been doing ahead of the next Wednesday's meeting.
That'd be great.
They'll give me the weekend to work on it too.
Okay, is that doable for everyone by tomorrow night to get Kevin any edits? Um, because we've had four days or so to look this over so far, so we probably have marked up our copies. Sound okay? All right.
Sounds okay to me.
Okay, super. Um, all right. Is there anything else, Kevin? Otherwise we'll move to adjourn.
Sorry to delay the meeting. I've got one last item I want to bring up. We talked about this at the last meeting around the Trittown Council and their request to increase their number by five percent. They're currently paying twenty thousand, five hundred dollars and they're looking to- They're currently paying $20,500 and they're looking to go up to 21,525. I did poll the other two communities who are contributors to the Trittown Council, that being Middleton and Boxford. Find out what they. Boxford pays $31,095 annually and Middleton's paying $29,925 annually. So Topsfield's obviously pretty significantly below the other two partner communities for contributions. Those are the, those are the stats. I, I did get, I did have a conversation with Meredith between meetings. She sent me some information about what they do as an organization. I think everybody knows. So I'm not going to go over that with you now, but I don't know if it's something you want to consider now that you have that information, we can take it up at the next meeting or discussion. I just wanted to give those, I, I made a promise. I'd deliver some updates on that, that ask for this meeting.
Do we know how? I was just going to say, do we know how these different numbers were arrived at? Are, are they based on population? Is it just what different towns have put in place over time? Or how, how is the disparity in, in place at this point?
Population.
That's what I'm asking.
Middleton has a larger population than Boxford.
But, but it was set some time ago and is not necessarily updated as we go.
Right, so we were all probably, there was a number I would, this is a presumption. I did not ask this question, but there was probably a, an allocation based on population, like Mr. Gant said, or youth in the schools, because it's focused on the schools in a lot of ways. And they derive three different numbers. Over the years, from the indications from the two town administrators, it has increased in the other two communities over time. Whether it's one time ask or they do it every year, I'm not sure of that, but it has increased over the time. And I know Meredith, this is her third year in a row asking for the increase. The last two years, she came in too late in the process. We were already through our budget process when the ask came in. So she asked in October, just to make sure she was, she was early to the game.
So she asked everybody for 5%? Or is she trying to have Topsfield catch up to the other towns?
I did not ask, I, today was a very unexpected day on a number front, so I didn't have a, I missed my meeting with her this afternoon. I had to call her back right before I had another meeting. And I, I got some basic information. She said, you sound super busy. I'll send over what I have. And she did. I could follow up with any follow-up questions you might have with her though, if, if there's specifics around this. If you have, if we could, if you have specific questions you want me to ask, I'll compile them. And the next time I speak with her, I'll ask those questions. So I can, I'll say that. Easy.
Yep, so when we send our edits, send any questions over to Kevin.
Well, here, here's a question of sorts though. You found out how much each of the community is, are contributing. What is their plan for the coming year? Not that we need to do what everybody else does, but were the other ones planning to increase it based on that request? Or do they come back and say, oh, we did that last year, which I doubt. But so it would be interesting to know what the other communities are doing. And they may not know yet either.
And I would want to know what the other communities have done, because it, it sounds to me as though the other communities increased when we did not, so.
Middleton's fiscal 23 is the number I provided, the 29.9. But I can, again, I'll compile and I'll make sure I get, I get all those answers for the, for the board. I think the net of this is about a thousand dollar ask year over year. But.
My suggestion, if we do anything, by the way, is that it's an even amount from, you know, to the hundred dollar even amount. You want to round up or round down, whatever. I just think it's cleaner for everybody to see it as, as an even amount.
I'll send over my questions.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
We're going to have to do it now. Okay, and can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Take it.
Any objections or discussion? All right, roll call. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hope?
Aye.
Ms. Ramirez is aye, so it passes unanimously. Cam will be proud of us. We didn't even go an additional half hour after he left.